Hi Jim.
Hello. How are you?
Good. Hello Becky.
How are you? Oh, I guess this was already. I didn't need that. Can I get some water?
Hi Jason. Hi Rob.
How many minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, oh my gosh. So is Chris not coming?
He's on his way.
I see at the Fairway Center they're really digging up the.
Yeah, I saw that.
I wondered, all I saw was all that dirt or sand, so I drove in there today.
Thanks sir.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You've got to try your will.
You're not even limping.
I can't extend it, I'm like. A year.
Yeah, well hopefully not. He gets a cure up that one door.
Because I, yeah, it just looked a little suspicious. No, I actually had my follow-up today.
You'd be getting pretty good there.
Jackson's like, "Well, you know, you gotta give some stuff up."
Like what?
Boy, you really didn't say. No.
Now your function at all is going to be upstairs and downstairs, right?
It'll be upstairs and downstairs. We have that functional area which will have three different types of flooring in it, which will have turd, hardwood, and like a rug rise.
How you doing? Shane McHale.
Shane.
Nice to meet you. I got that from everybody.
Running, stuff like that downstairs.
Good to see you.
Today, probably upstairs.
Good to see you.
Which like today, we just had the SCC basketball team in.
What?
The SCC basketball team in. There are 16 players, and they were working out. And there were some people that just stayed in the lower level.
Appreciate that.
I don't know how high of a intensity we were working out there is.
How many?
Oh yeah.
Sixteen. I thought you said sixty.
They're planning on a couple of.
That was intense.
Yeah, hi Chris Reed.
Good day.
Alright, folks, it's 4:30. It's time for us to begin.
Thanks, appreciate that.
So if we could come to order please, I appreciate it. The regular work session Monday, August 27th. If it's okay with everybody, we'll just go down our regular agenda, then we'll come back to discussion items. Not much on the regular agenda. We have a presentation by Steamboat Days which they want to move back to.
They want to move back to the next.
This is primarily to have a presentation of their check that's part of their agreement.
Okay.
Scheduled for the 4th. They want to move that back to the 17th.
Okay, so we'll take that off the agenda. And we have a library signup month proclamation before we run to Freeburg, and we got an email today from her about the library usage, which is pretty amazing, the amount of people that use the library. On the agenda then, Eric, we have the sale. Eric, there he is. Eric, 547 South Central.
This is a home that we acquired quite a while ago. Have an interested individual and lives down the block, I think with his brother, acquiring it and rehabbing it to live in. Submitted a $500 bid on it. We haven't had any other interest in it in the last couple of years, so I imagine he would be the only one, but it would be open to the public to bid on, so.
Okay. That house will take some.
Yeah.
Couple dollars.
Quite a long time. Before the city acquired it, it'd been vacant for quite a while, so.
Yeah. Okay, pretty routine then. The replat of the 12th edition of Flint Ridge is the next item on the agenda.
This area was final platted as one lot in 2003. It's for the spec building there in West Burlington Avenue and Division Street. It did go through the council for a final plat of two lots in 2005, but didn't get recorded as such. I think there may have been some issues with the title of the plat, but it's essentially the same plat as what was approved in 2005, but titling it as a replat to move forward with that property in sale and going forward with that, so.
Okay. Any questions, council?
No.
Another pretty routine, thank you. Do you want to, while you're there, Eric, talk about the support for the Great River Housing Trust Fund?
Yeah, this is operated through the Regional Planning Commission. It's four counties in southeast Iowa that are under the southeast Iowa region. We operate a housing trust fund where local governments and entities contribute to this, and then it leverages funds for additional grand dollars to be used in the region, helping low to moderate income individuals with down payment assistance, home ownership, fixing up their homes, heating, cooling, roofing, siding. So it's a good program to help out quite a few more individuals than the actual local match would be able to. At our last meeting, we just approved three homes in Burlington for $10,000 each for home improvements. In the meeting prior to that, there was two homes, so the money does come back more than it goes out. And then this money also leverages additional funding for other programs. So it's been a good program in the time that I've been on the trust.
And our contribution is what?
$10,000.
$10,000, yeah.
And that wouldn't be required until July of next year, July 1 of 2013.
Okay. Do we have that somewhere?
No, but we'll build it in.
Okay.
I mean, it's just good money to prioritize in here, and we've done it in the past. Looks like the last time that we did this, we bonded for that. We did two payments of that the last time, you were saying, $20,000?
Yeah, we just paid last year in October, $20,000 to the trust.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions, council? The other one on the consent agenda is the nuisance abatements.
Actually, can I ask a question, Eric? So there's some names on this nuisance abatement that came up a couple of times in the fore in the past. Is there any way that we could get a list, sort of virtual offenders that keep on coming up and up and up?
Yeah, it's something I talked to Tabitha about, is starting to create a better spreadsheet so we can track on a yearly basis.
Like the number of times?
Number of times.
And the total.
Per property, number of times per owner, so that's something hopefully we can start to do in the future.
Yeah, because when I was looking through this the other day, I'm like, hmm, unfortunately I recognize that name.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I recognize that name.
We get the same names.
And it's something we can work with our JIS too to kind of create some maps and hotspots as well, kind of, some of our case department, what you do with your stuff, so we can kind of show the areas that we are targeting or have more nuisance abatements than others, so.
Will be good. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Alright, let's move to discussion items. I'm going to save Travis, if that's okay. Mr. Farnell, is that okay, if we save Travis and go to Jason and Rob to talk about the shell building?
Thank you. Jason Hutchison with the Greater Burlington Partnership, and with me is Rob Parington, who's our new Director of Economic Development, so he's attended today to meet all of you. This may mean nothing to you, but it is the flat map of Flint Ridge Business Park, so to give you some frame of reference, the Recplex is here, PPG is here, Ingress Ramp is here, the Lus is here, to give you some idea on the layout of that. I've been in the community for more than five years now, and no issue has been busting my chops more than the shell building. And every time I speak to a group, it is, "When is that shell building going to be sold?" And my grandma even brings it up over Easter dinner, bless her heart. So there is tremendous interest in moving the shell building and seeing development happen out there. And the building was constructed in 2004, and this is our fourth shell building, so three have sold, and this is number four. And we build them for a couple of reasons. Nearly every community has ground that they could show prospect. I mean, if you need five acres, you'd be hard pressed to find fewer than 500 communities in Iowa that could provide you with that. So we construct buildings to put more inventory on the market. And also, even though companies, they make decisions on their timeframe. Sometimes they make short decisions, sometimes they make long decisions, but typically, once the decision is made to locate somewhere, they don't want to wait two years for the construction process to take. Some very large customizable projects, sure, they'll wait that. I mean, you can't do a food processing spec building because those are so customized to the needs of the specific business. So we do shell buildings to reduce that construction time. If they acquire it in December, they can still do work inside, they don't have to wait for the seasons to change. And it gives us a competitive advantage, and has historically. It also is a reason for folks to come to our community. If that building might not work for them, at least they're in our community and we can show them other areas. And we've done a lot of that. You'll recall, a few years ago, we had a prospective company looking at it, and they got in the building, did some work. We really tried hard to make that deal happen. They had an investor fall through. We held the building for them while they could get those funds together, and it just didn't materialize. When we realized that it was not going to move forward, it was 2008, and the economy crashed, and the real estate market deflated. Today, the competition that we have on that shell building is competition with existing building inventory, not so much in our community, but in other communities in the Midwest. As companies have shuttered facilities, they've made a strategic decision to close a facility and move on. So after that point, the value of the real estate is not as important to those companies as it perhaps was. So there have been times where we've been competing with fire sale prices out there on our building. We have a deal that has come forward, and it is on a very short timeframe. It is a company that's already doing business in southeast Iowa. I would label them a reputable company for the reasons of confidentiality. The company would prefer to not be disclosed at this point in time. It would be for an industrial use, not a commercial use, but an industrial use. The jobs created, this is not a major job creation project. There will be jobs created, but because the company has more than one facility in southeast Iowa, this would help accommodate their growth, and jobs may shift from facility to facility. So it's difficult for me to put an exact number on it. But it's not, we're not talking 150 jobs. We're talking a smaller number of jobs. But it is for us and for the community a real estate deal. It helps an existing company stay and grow in our community and in our area. And it moves the shell building, which we think will provide some momentum to our efforts and to the community's efforts. It clears up some of our capital. We have a mortgage on that building. It allows us to free up that capital to look at the next project and move on, look for another way to reinvest those dollars. And it also provides additional tax revenue to the city, particularly in the Flint Hills, TIF account and the urban renewal area for Flint Hills. I took a look at our previous valuations on shell buildings. So once they sell and they're in operation, and based upon the per square footage valuation, and then the valuation per acre on our previous three buildings, the value for this building, if those averages maintain the same, and the levy rate maintain the same, should generate a property tax bill of about $706,000 per year. Now, there's no guarantees that that's where it's going to be.
$706,000 per?
I'm sorry, during the first 10 years, so cumulative of that.
Yeah.
Big difference.
I wish you were correct.
I was just thinking somebody out there is hearing that, wow!
Someone would get that bill and fall over. Yeah, right. Thank you.
Let's already say sold.
Today, it is generating $662 per year. Spec buildings have a unique area in Iowa Code that allow the building itself to have full abatement and to not go on the tax rolls until there's a user, either until it's leased or until it's sold. And then those users would qualify for the normal abatement, so it's just as though the building didn't exist for assessment purposes, according to Iowa Code. Of that $706,000 over 10 years, based upon that in the current TIF formulas, that should generate about $650,000 in TIF revenue over those 10 years. So not all of the property taxes stay in the TIF account. Some of those individual levy rates go out to their various areas, but the bulk of that stays within the TIF district, which is the Flint Hills. To make the deal happen on this building, the cost of the real estate was incredibly important. In fact, it was really, really kind of the top priority. So we are looking at reducing the price of that shell building. And typically, in economic development projects, especially in business parks, the way TIF can be utilized is that in anticipation of these future tax revenues, the city would bond in anticipation of those, and use the proceeds in year one as an incentive in the project. We are fully aware of the city's plan to reduce its debt limit, and we are incredibly supportive of those efforts. So we're not asking that the city bond in anticipation of those future revenues. In fact, we're not asking the city to risk revenue that it otherwise wouldn't have. What we are asking for is participation from the TIF in rebate amounts to our organization over the next 10 years, up to no more than $500,000. And it would be structured as a rebate, so if the revenue doesn't come in, the city is not obligated to pay that out. And so I view it as really a very low-risk proposition to the council. And that $500,000 would be used to reduce the price on the shell building to make this deal happen. Our Board of Directors, while it would prefer to have all of the dollars upfront, is willing to wait over time to receive those dollars to make this deal happen.
Does, how does that, how does that, I don't understand how that doesn't offset the $650,000?
It does offset the $650,000.
So, and so actually, we'll be making about $150,000 that will go back toward the, back to the TIF?
That would stay in the TIF account, right? The other 66 would go to the various tax levies.
Actually, out of the $650,000, if he applies, the new owner would be able to pay for the tax abatement, the industrial tax abatement. And if that occurs, that abatement formula would allow that, about $150,000 to go to that new owner. So there would be about $500,000 come off in the first 10 years.
This factors in, the analysis that I've already put in here has factored in the abatement. It assumes that the company applies and is approved, the full industrial.
You've already reduced that.
I've discounted it for that.
That's good.
Yes.
That's good news.
Thank you for bringing that up, though, because I did not mention that.
Are you on a timeframe, Jason?
We are, of course. As I said, it is a very fast-moving project, and our hope is that we can close on this deal at the end of next week, which is lightning speed.
Wow.
And we have, we have done a lot of work in a very short amount of time.
Well, Jason, I think everybody in the chamber's done a lot of work to try to sell that building. And I know there's been, because I know when we were running, when Shane and I were running for city council, a lot of people had the misconception that the city owned that building, and didn't realize that the chamber owns that building, and that the, or, you know, that you have, you guys have always taken all that risk, I guess. And I applaud you for finding a buyer finally, so I really would like to see it happen for you.
Thank you. Just as a commentary, this is a similar thing that we did for the Weingard Company for the Fairway Center.
Except. How many local jobs that could open? What, 50?
It's, it's hard to say. You know, to attribute specific jobs, I mean, overall, the company is going to have a stronger footprint here than they have had in the past. And it is likely that over time, we will see continued growth from this company. At best, at best guess right now, I would say we could count on 10 jobs coming to this facility immediately, but it's hard to say for sure what the future holds.
To finish my thought, it's like what we did for Weingard, but yet it's different, because the rebate is not going to the company. It's going to.
The chamber. Wouldn't be structured as a rebate, because the rebate would go back to the current owner of the project, but you could do something that's fairly comparable, Travis?
Well, that's, that's the one question that I think you probably need to bring your bond attorney on. If it's actually considered a grant, then because it would be a grant back to the chamber, I'm not exactly, because it's not really a debt, a true debt obligation in the city. So you would have to structure it in such a way that you would be able to claim the TIF revenues as an obligation to certify it as debt. Otherwise, if there's not a debt obligation in the city, then you have no ability to claim the revenues, per se.
It can be done, but we have to find the right structure. And before, the steps that we need to go through, would there need to be a public hearing held before we did this?
Yes, yes, so there'd be a public hearing, so you have to sign a date for the hearing. Maybe at your next council meeting, then it would be a public hearing, so the next Friday timeframe, would it be a public hearing?
And Jason, would this company consider something like what was done for Weingard in place of the chamber taking that?
Well, I think if we had to structure it, we could, we could structure it so that it worked. I mean, the company's preference, because, because of the timeline, and the company really needs to get in there and finish the building, and it's ready, it was ready to occupy the space yesterday. The company has, has decided the cleanest way would be for us to do a real estate transaction with the company, and then have the details be worked out with, between the city and, and our organization. They would prefer to not be a direct party to the, to the incentive, and, but if the cash needed to flow to them, I mean, I think we can make that work.
But, and they, you know, and I guess I'm coming back to this question on the tax abatement, that, that is figured in there?
It is.
And these are the net numbers after that?
These are the net numbers. I assumed five-year industrial tax abatement, first year 75%, second year 60, 45, 30, and 15.
So you're assuming like a $2 million assessed value or something?
It assumes 2.2 million. And that is based on the square footage average of our other three buildings.
And you have gone over that with them, that it would be that value?
That's, he's not talking about a minimum assessment agreement. He's just talking about.
I know, but I mean, can they, that's assumed at $2 million. Can they come and say, "This building's not worth $2 million," and then get a different abatement? That's what I guess I'm saying.
Could, could they challenge an assessment that would come to them? Absolutely. And so the way that we have suggested structuring this is so that if there's a shortfall, we take that hit as opposed to the city. So let's say instead of $650,000, it would generate $400,000. Well, we would not be obligating the city to provide us with $401,000. We would, we would cap it out.
In a traditional tax rebate structure, you would do a percentage of tax rebate with a not-to-exceed figure?
That's what we see a lot of them structure.
Which is where you would, which is similar to what you do with Weingard. You said a percentage with a, well, actually, we haven't even done that yet. We have to get that in place. But we'll have a, it has to have a not-to-exceed figure so that you can go to the public and say, "This is the maximum that we might be granting back to the developer." And regardless of the structure, it sounds like what we're talking about, whether it's a tax, a tax rebate back to the property owner, or some sort of a grant structure, would still be, have to be structured as a, within the confines of that rebate amount with a not-to-exceed figure.
And then as, as far as the effect on the city's debt capacity, this, if it was an obligation, it'd probably be subject to an appropriation, where the city would not be appropriating a debt payment to anybody unless an evaluation was there. So you would not be on the hook, per se, for payments.
The one who's, and this is one of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks with this, needing to, anything that was structured on this would have to be done in a way that if there is a change to the commercial industrial property tax rate in the next legislative session, there's an understanding from them that they're the ones on the hook for not getting as much as they otherwise would have. We're not going to be the ones on the hook having to get the money regardless of what happens with property taxes.
That risk falls on us, and is perhaps another reason why I think the buyer would prefer that the agreement be between the city and our organization, because we, we take that risk. The business needs some certainty in this deal, and we would absorb the risk under those instances.
So what I understand, you just, you and Travis said, Jim, is that we can't have a resolution on the agenda for Monday night to approve this, or we have to have some legal way to do this?
You'd have to have a public hearing for, for a later meeting.
Is that good?
And that would be the no less than four, no more than 20, I assume, on this?
Yeah, I think so. You might have a minimum of 10.
10 and 20?
You might, I'll have it afterwards.
Or is that? Is that a big problem?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. I'm, I'm not sure the best way to, to structure this, but, you know, certainly from our perspective, the sooner that we could wrap it up, the better, but we have to do things by the book as well.
It sounds like we can't legally do it in that sort of frame.
Well, you can't, you can't commit the city to doing this. And it would be comparable where you are right now with Weingard. Back in January, I think you approved the concept of providing him a rebate, but that has never been formalized in a way that it's legally binding, because we, and I don't know if you've talked, Stephanie, with Bob?
The last email was he was going to call me, and I haven't heard from him.
Gosh, I thought we had done that.
You, you did an agreement, but you haven't done it formally by resolution after a public hearing. And that's one that we're, we've been waiting on the bonding attorney to get us the information so that we can put it on the agenda. But that's the same process that this is talking about having to do. Even though you have, you've said that you would do something, it's not something that's binding. The intent is there that you're going to do something on the Weingard project, but it's not formally in place. The only thing that you can do is kind of, if you're willing to move forward instead of public hearing, is you're kind of intending, giving them the intent that you're willing to see the structure move forward, but you can't guarantee it until after the public hearing. And they have to kind of go on faith that if you start down the process, you're going to, your intent is to complete it.
And we can't call a special meeting to do that?
You, you can call special meetings, but the publication requirements are the bigger issue in terms of whether it's, if it's a no less than 10, you have to get it published at least at 10 days prior to holding that meeting. And it might only be four, but that's one we have to check on. We can do special meetings for it.
I think our preference would be to, you know, see your support Monday, and finalizing that at a later date, I think, I think is okay. I mean, we, we want support for the concept, and then we, we have a good faith relationship with the city. We have no doubt that we'll see that followed through if there's commitment there.
So we could put on the agenda, set a date for a public hearing on our Tuesday meeting, which would be the next regular council meeting, on the 18th, is it, or the 17th?
Seventeenth.
And we could have a public hearing on the 17th on this concept. However, however we structure it.
Would it be for, would it be for support, or?
That would, what you would do, the, this next meeting would be citing the public hearing. You'd hold the public hearing on, and then after that public hearing, you can take action on committing to doing the structure. And part of it, we don't have, I think there's still some talk about with the bond attorney about how this gets structured, how it's restructured. it's written appropriately so that you get get this in place.
You want to make sure, make certain that the terms obviously discussed and thrown out, that the city doesn't have a binding obligation put together. Obviously, that's the intent, the one you're bonding attorney to be writing out this resolution document. And we need to know, you know, the not to exceed amount, as far as what you'll be on, as far as the rebate or the grant structure, et cetera.
One of the other concerns I have, and we haven't talked about this, Travis, the property decision or thing that Eric had on here earlier for plating this, this land still needs replatted. And I don't know if that needs to be taken care of and cleaned up before we can really do this, because you need a legal description for the property that you're doing this on.
I would think you will read that legal description.
Yeah. Because I didn't realize that until, that we were dealing with that until today.
And that'll happen on Tuesday.
That'll happen on Tuesday. And then it's still, is that the, when when is that then formally set in place? Is it as soon as we go here?
Yeah, we would have plans to submit that to the auditor's office, or recorder's office, whichever one, right away.
So Jim, in simple terms, what taxes are the city getting from this property now?
Very little. It's just a bare land.
Six hundred and sixty-five dollars, or something like that, a year.
It's as if there's no structure on it.
So now, if we go ahead with this, we're going to be increasing the taxes coming into the city?
Correct.
Right?
Yes. You're not, you're going to have a, the majority of it, you're you're committing for the first ten years with this. About, you're talking about an average of 15,000 a year of new revenue coming in for the first ten years, and then afterwards, you'd have the full value.
This will be a ten-year rebate?
Ten-year rebate.
So that's what I'm getting at, I guess, thinking to the public. We're getting hardly anything on it now. If you go ahead with this, we're only getting something, not the full amount, but we're going to be getting something on a regular basis, right?
Yeah. And you know, one of the, one of the things that they, I think you have one and a half million or so into the project, into this property. You've had interest costs. This isn't, this is something that doesn't get them making any money on this. It's been it's been speculative. It truly needs a speculative nature of a spec building.
We have made a significant investment in in that property. And, you know, after this deal, we'll be able to deploy, redeploy capital on on other projects.
And I like that, too, about it, because I think your hands have been tied as far as being able to move on to other projects, and and that would move you on to other things, which would help the community, of course.
And you can get your groom off your back.
Absolutely. That'd be great.
Normally, the TIF funds would be used for future infrastructure in the business park or in the area, I guess, in the TIF.
But they would be used for something just like this, would they not?
You you would see it used for a project, I mean, you you could end up seeing theoretically a project where you're having ten jobs come to town, they're building a new building, and they're asking for 100% rebate. Typically, we don't give 100% rebate. We're given pretty close to that overall on this, if you do what they're requesting. But at the same time, the partnership is our partner in seeing development occur in town. And you do want to try to do what you what we can to help them to be whole. So that's, I mean, that's part of the balancing act you have to play on it, is where where do you come down as a counsel?
Food for thought. It's a creative way to do things. That's good. Well, I don't, you know, that's the procedure, Jason, I guess. We're going to have to go, obviously, we can't do anything different, so.
Well, I think that we have several limitations. Besides the public hearing, we can't take action on it until we have an actual legal description that we can work off of that's certified. So that has necessarily has to wait until after that.
Who does that?
He's getting a legal description taken care of with the action that you'll, with the other agenda item that was on here next Tuesday. We'll be able to use that legal description, the bonding attorney will, in order to develop the resolutions that need to be done. But it can't, it's not, it can't legally be used and officially acted upon, that final resolution, until after the plat's done, the replat's done. So we're kind of delayed on action anyway.
Okay.
All right.
Did that help you?
Thank you. Yeah, it does.
But I think the general consensus here is that we want to see that building on the tax rolls. And we want to see it, we want to be, see it being used for something other than a pigeon roost, or whatever.
We do, too. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks for coming, Rob. All right. Are we going to talk about this Steamboat Days issue, Jim, or is that put off?
Really, it's put off. The one thing that I think that we, this was on here for, was Stephanie was going to review some numbers, just to give you an idea of how much resources the city commits to seeing this event come off each year. And I, you, that was in your packet. Were you ready to go over that?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, was it, it should have been, is it number three?
Yes.
Okay. I just put together the dates and the different departments that we've worked on at Steamboat Days. We have an unwritten agreement with them on what we bill to them and what we don't. So we can start with the first one, the streets department. We put in 108 regular hours and 7.5 overtime. So we do bill them out of the overtime hours only. The police department, we bill out all their overtime hours. They work down there for security. Property maintenance, this year, we did bill out last year for the overtime, and last year, we didn't. So we haven't been real consistent on that. But they did pay the bills, so obviously, they were fine with that. But from what you can see, we have 230 regular hours and then 105 overtime hours. So on my little note, A, what happens with property maintenance is it gets divided down by the different departments in the city of who uses those employees and what they do. So for the regular 230 hours, I charge that to our, the general fund, Riverfront Port of Burlington account, and that amount was $26,000. We did get reimbursed 5,800 for the overtime. So if you kind of just look at that, that's, you know, about $20,000 that, you know, is coming right out of our general fund for Steamboat Days for these property maintenance employees. Fire department's down there about 20 hours. And the auditorium staff, of course, they're always down there, so they, I didn't put the regular hours, but their overtime hours that week are about 53 hours. And I'm not sure we've never billed up for those hours, which I would think that in the future, we might want to negotiate that, because we do have some double time hours. And I mean, they are down there specifically for Steamboat Days. I guess, the reason this kind of got brought up, and I wanted to put this in, kind of formalized, is, you know, they're going to present the $10,000. And and some things I've heard is, why do we give the city $10,000? I guess, it used to be payment back for the stage that was filmed. So I don't know if there's just some confusion with new board members, old board members. You know, we've had some close ties with council and city staff being on Steamboat Days. So I would rather we get more maybe in writing for them, what, you know, what the city will provide for them, what we can bill them. Because now, like I said, when I looked last year, we didn't bill them, but the year before, we did, we don't have an agreement with them. So I just thought I'd give this information to you, so you would, you know, kind of know exactly what resources we have into it. So when they, you know, we discussed the new concession agreement, which is coming up to, Jim, are we going to maybe do that next work session, or? You haven't met with anybody yet?
No, they're still putting together information.
Oh, okay.
So they they weren't ready to have a discussion yet on that.
Because, yeah, our concession agreement now is pretty generic. You know, they're going to provide, you know, the alcohol down there for all the different events down there, and we will pay the utilities. I mean, there's things like that in there. But in specific regards to the week of Steamboat Days, it's really not spelled out, so.
I think we should, to give Stephanie and Jim the authorization, just go ahead and work up some kind of agreement that that we all can live with.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think that, part of it, we don't, we're not really have an angst against what's going on at Steamboat Days, because that's a great event, and we do need to partner and be a part of it. We've we've made some changes, too, and I don't know if if you've highlighted it on any other stuff yet, Stephanie. But like this last year, or this last time that we did Steamboat Days, the, our property maintenance group put a lot of time into just their daily work, went into making Steamboat Days work. I mean, that basically, a full week's work for that crew. And then, in the past, what we've typically done is, is the amount of time that they put into that, we've incorporated into our bill rate, or charge rate, to all the other departments for any work that was done. And it's, that tends to inflate the cost for all the other departments. And I think this last year's budget, did we, you put a figure back into the Riverfront budget?
Right.
That reflected the specific cost for Steamboat Days. And it's like, for that time?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand dollars. So that's a different item that you, that we wouldn't see before. We did want to show it there, because that is a commitment that we put into specifically into making Steamboat happen. And we also don't want it to inflate our costs to the other departments.
Well, and I had somebody talking to me actually about this, saying that they present, they were going to present, is it $10,000 back?
Yes.
And that that should be going for Riverfront improvements, and why isn't it going for Riverfront improvements?
I don't, I mean, I've.
Was there something in there? I mean?
Originally, when it was first done, the first two, that $10,000, from my understanding, was, we're doing some improvements on the, at the dock, I think for the stage itself. And that was more than $10,000. I think they thought that it was going to take two years' worth of that $10,000 payment to, for the, to cover the city's costs on that. And that has continued over time. But we put more than that $10,000 worth into this.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand.
From our perspective, we wanted to at least let you know, it makes sense that we put a lot of time into this, and a lot of our effort into it. But it's not as if that $10,000 that they do give to us is a gift, that we don't have something that that's helping to offset.
It's kind of like rebate coming back on what we do.
And we may not, and it may be that you don't think that there needs to be an offset, because there is a value for us to put into that. But but we don't want it to be that you don't think that we don't put something into it.
Becky, in this concession agreement, which is one we just did, May 21, 2012, we approved it at that meeting. And it's about, well, it expires at the end of this month, but it says, in consideration for the concession here, shall continue to contribute 10,000 per year to the city. Doesn't say.
That it's for anything in particular.
Again, I think that's where there's just a lot of misconception, is it was once maybe to repay for the bridge, or for the stage, and now they think they're just giving us...
Well, and I guess it came up to me about the docks down there, and where, you know, why can't this $10,000? So I think there is maybe some misconception about that money, and because there are people looking for money for the docks, and they're thinking, well, that.
That would be great if.
And again, part of this.
All our costs were covered.
All of this fits, all of this fits into our, I think, really, our discussion about where should our general fund be, in trying to get it to a spot where you're covering adequate things. Right now, we're close to, close, well, 75%, I think, of our general fund is personnel costs. And that leaves a fairly small amount of money to do other projects. That's kind of what has eaten primarily into our ability to use, like, for example, the hotel motel has a part that's for Riverfront. We've used that to supplement the general fund, because we haven't had enough money to cover those personnel costs. There's always going to be some sort of a trade-off. But if you go to reduce the amount of our general fund that's used towards personnel costs, and you redirect it to other things, you've got to be very sure that we are using, making wise investments with that money.
Is that standard, 75% for personnel?
That's ours. And that differs differs from town to town. Sergeant Bluff, where I came from, we were at about 60%. The town that I was at before was at a little over 70% when I arrived, and was at 55% when I left. But you go to, like, City of Sioux City, they're 80% personnel. And they have shed 100, out of a, over a 10-year period, from 2000 to 2010, they went from 850 to 750 jobs. And they still were at 80% in their general fund. But that's what you get when you have a town that is flat in population and doesn't have a lot of growth in it. Sioux City is very similar to Burlington in that respect. It's hard to to not end up where your personnel costs get to be that much of your budget, because you have so much, we have so much fixed costs from having existing infrastructure without new growth.
Well, and as and as I've said, that's what bothers me. I think there are some things, and I was glad Jason was here today, but that looked like we're on the verge of having some new growth. But, you know, it's very hard to respond to that, unless it's something like the way Jason's bringing, you know, this up to. And that's kind of sad, because we've been waiting for this day, and now, you know, we're just not, and so I'm happy that we go over all of these things, so people can understand it and understand, you know, why money is or isn't there. I think that's important for people to understand.
Anything else, Stephanie, on that? Okay. Counsel, are you ready to move on? Travel and training policies.
This is a Stephanie item. This has come out of the audit process. Just a recommendation from our auditors to make some changes fairly quickly. We will, I think, have an audit finding on a violation of our previous policy. And it just called for some things that we should do, just to change how we do things to get to where we're, that doesn't happen in the future.
Just before you start, we do currently have a policy in place.
Yes.
And this is just a, some tweaking.
Yep. There is a copy of it in the packet. And what is changed is the meals expense. We used to do it on a reimbursement basis, and a lot of times, people would ask for advances before they'd go to training. And then they would need to bring back itemized receipts for all of their expenditures, which, you know, is time-consuming for everybody, the the person spending the money, and then the person, all of us having to review it. So the auditors the last two years have always said, have you thought about going to a per diem? Where then, depending on where they're going, and what meals are going to be gone, traveling time, we just give them a certain dollar amount. They don't need to bring back a receipt. It's based on the government standards, and they have it all listed out by region, by city, metro location. So really, this policy, the only thing that's changing is on page two, I added the number three, where it talks about the meal expense, and what, I went ahead and put the per diem rates for Iowa. Des Moines and Cedar Rapids has a different, a little bit higher rate than all the other Iowa cities. Predominantly, we travel in the state. If somebody does end up traveling out of state, then they would just go to this website, look up where they're going. And then we would, either way, we can give advances now for the per diem amounts, or we would reimburse them when they get back for the times and the days they were gone. So basically, that's the change. Everything else is is the same.
But you did say there's no receipting then.
For the meals, then. Nope, they can go and send, you know, wherever they want to eat. They don't have to bring back a receipt.
That's a good plan.
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody's been real receptive. All the department heads and the employees think it'll be a lot easier for them to, you know, we always, when we do advances, then people are returning money, and it's just, it's just not a very efficient way to use stuff.
I used to, I used to do that when I took teams out of town. You have to receipt everything and come right down to the paddy and turn it back in.
And turn it back in, yeah. And we have a lot of that.
I always had that money in my pocket, and I thought, ugh, you know.
So did anybody have any questions, or?
And this has to be filled out, how long prior to, how's, how far ahead of the event is, do you, it's probably in there. I don't know if I see it. I just am curious, since I know we have.
Seems like an ask for two weeks in advance. I don't know that this this has that as part of the policy. I think that's just what the form says, to make sure that we can get the.
I mean, ideally, we'd like to get on the claims and have time. But if somebody comes in, and next week, they're leaving, we will cut them a check. we will cut them a check, and then it'll be on the next claims.
I have filled it out the day that I go to travel, but-
And we'll have a transition period too, I mean, because some people are traveling next week, so I said, I've had them held off.
The only spot that we have any language that talks about having it done, have it done a certain amount of time in advance is if you're going to get that cash upfront, because we can't process it unless it goes through claims. So, and that's, that wouldn't change. If you want to be able to get your, your money upfront for travel, the per diem amount, you have to have it done a certain amount of time in advance. The only, the other part of it is, that we do look at with the, the travel forms, is you're, you need to make a, it's asking you to make a conscious check against the costs that this has versus what your travel budget is, so that you don't put yourself over budget. And if you're going to have it over budget, the department has to have a way of addressing that issue. Are they cutting costs somewhere else, or how, how that's being covered as an apartment?
The statement here says, "An advance must be requested part of the cutoff date for city council meetings that precede the travel date," so it can get on the claims, like Stephanie said. And so if I draw out forty-six dollars, and I only spend thirty, do I get to keep the sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. So when I go to Sioux City, you'll fill out my form for me, please?
That's what I was wondering, the same thing. We need to work on those.
I don't even know, I think Jill has filled out one of those sheets for each of you.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to work on that. You know, if you all want advances, we can do it beforehand, we'll know exactly the dates and times you'll be traveling.
Well, that, that particular meeting, there shouldn't be, because most of the meals are provided.
Most of the meals are provided there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, anything else on that one?
Nope.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
There's a couple of appointments that are listed. What do you want to do first? Jim, you want to do Travis, or you want to do Eric?
Want to be done, Eric?
I have a question.
Okay. Travis.
Let me get my remote show.
Oh, wait a minute, I shouldn't have done that. I might want to look at something.
Thank you. Always have this light reading material, puts myself to sleep at night.
Thanks.
It's beautiful.
It is. It's very- See, there's a table where I actually put my kids to sleep, and I just read them books.
That's a beautiful thing.
Daddy, are you making up a reading? I say, yes, I am.
Do we need to flip the switch back there, to sort of, is that how that works?
Oh, I don't think we were going to do that.
Oh, you're not?
For the work session, I didn't think we were doing that. Or, or you want to?
We don't have to.
I don't know.
It'd be nice for the, it'd be nice for the people at home to be able to see it.
Is it not showing up at all? I'm connected, but there's nothing on the, who was connected?
It was up earlier.
Yeah, it was. It was up just a-
I really didn't want to present.
We really can't sit here and hold this up.
It's there. That's cute. They all come look like Travis.
All right, so, does that, does that monitor back there show that this is what's coming to the home?
Nope. Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Travis requires Piper Jaffray, I guess, for a first-name basis now. Thanks for having us out. Basically, just wanted to give you an update on your intermediate plan of finance, and like, what's an intermediate plan of finance? Or if you remember back in the June work session, where we outlined short-term plans, which were accomplished in June, and then the intermediate plan kind of carries you through planning with the next fiscal year, and then the long-term plan is obviously developed out of this intermediate plan. Just wanted to provide you with an update. Going to kind of walk through the background, some goals that we've been working with city administration on, and just kind of some, a summary. Since completing the short-term plan, we've met with city officials twice in developing this intermediate plan. Kind of our goals and topics of discussion, which we've been, have been documenting in our meetings, and providing an update back and forth, so we're just kind of all on the same page as to what was discussed, any financial implications are shown, just so that we're on the same page, Piper Jaffray and the city administration. So we're talking financial policies, debt book, or debt profile, budget documents, and a long-range planning tool, and then capital improvement planning. So just kind of going to walk you through an update on this, and I think kind of the goal is that this work session kind of introduces some of these topics, and pushes along some discussion. Plan right now is to come back at your next work session in September, and then hopefully kind of round out this before you get into your goal-setting sessions as a council. So intermediate plan of finance, just to kind of jog your memory, from what was outlined in June. We talked about adopting the formal council fund balance policies, debt management policies, developing a long-range budgeting tool that will allow the city to see the implications on, on how you can turn the general fund rightsizing around, and knowing what the tax implications might be, if any, as far as rate. Developing then the capital improvement planning tool that allows you to see your capital needs, how those would be paid for, identifying funding sources, and that way you're considering the full picture. And, you know, as a project gets on to, I guess I would say, the list, you would know full well before you approve, or hold a hearing on the project, what the implications might be as far as levy rate, what source of payment those will be paid, bonds or notes might be paid from, whether it be through TIF revenues, local option sales tax, a debt service levy, or other abatement streams that the city might have. So kind of timeline, we've been working on building a budget projection tool. I'd say July, August, I don't think we're quite there yet. We've kicked around, we've looked at some other budgeting tools from some other cities, ones that we've helped develop, and worked in, I guess, modifying, you would say. So I think we're getting to the point, we're trying to determine what's the best output from the city's perspective, and taking things from your accounting software, and then easily turning that into budget projections going forward. So I think we're making some progress. I think the bad news is that it doesn't appear to be that your software would kick out a lot of great reports that will easily implement into the, a budget, long-range budget planning tool. So I think we're going to have a little bit of programming involved, so I'm going to dust off some of my computer skills, and then let's see how that goes. But I'm fully confident we'll be able to do something. There might be more manual inputs than we originally would have liked, but this is a kind of a once-a, once-a-year thing, where you're taking last year's final data, dumping it into the system, and then moving forward. So even if it is a, a once-a-year manual input, it's a data dump that you only do once a year. So I guess we'll take some concessions. If there's other cities that are in the same boat, you're not, definitely not alone with this being a manual process. In some ways, you might like it to be a manual process, because you can actually see and keep the numbers. You just have to double-check and make sure that everything ties out, obviously. So we'll, we'll build ample checks in to make sure that all the plug numbers would tie out to, for example, audited results, or your treasury report. Moving forward then, in August, present the budget projection tool. I'm looking, that's probably more a September, October date. Getting you involved in long-range planning discussion, I guess it's August, so we're a little bit ahead there. And then making some decisions on the long-range capital financing. The goal of that taking place in October, December. And when I say making a decision on the long-range capital financing, we're looking at the approved five-year financing plan from last year's budget, and obviously, there may be some modifications to what was approved then, but then also addressing the loans that were taken out for the short-term debt, and how that will be financed down the road. There's nothing that says that that has to be in October, December timeframe. It could stretch into next year's budget season. I think ideally, that would be addressed this fall yet. But we're not married to this timeline. I would, I guess I'll step back and say, a lot of this stuff is really draft and discussion. So we don't want this to look like Piper Jaffray's telling you how to run this time. We're, we're up for input, you know, if you want to slow things down, speed things up, we're certainly willing to do so. Financial policies, you should have a great, big, fourteen-page packet in front of you. And again, I'll stress that these are just simply policies that we have put together. A little bit about the process of kind of how we got there, looking at considerations. We're working with some of the rating agency comments, kind of some best practices from GFLA, the Government Finance Officers Association, looking at comparable policies from other cities. And then just what are the city's needs? And so it's going to be specific to the city of Burlington. These may or may not be comprehensive. I will point out at the very bottom left, it does say draft. So these are definitely up for input. This is kind of birthed out of two meetings, I guess I would say, between Jim and Stephanie, Stephanie and I, and then just some work on my end of researching and editing some policies. Just to kind of take you through an overview, city did have, I guess I'd say, financial policies in place. It's not readily clear when exactly they were adopted, or if they came before the council for adoption and approval. So the goal with, with these policies is that they come before, for formal approval. Obviously, the city's approved financial policies last year, some fund balance policies. But as far as comprehensive debt management policies, I don't think he found a reason that they were approved by council. So, again, we've kind of said from the beginning, we're not going to go back and look at what was and what wasn't done. We're moving forward and looking at, what are some good, sound financial management policies? These are going to be pretty comprehensive, dealing with creditworthiness, revenue, operating budget, capital improvement, debt administration, tax increment finance, and investment objectives, I mean, reporting objectives. And then within each of those categories, there's policies. You're just now getting this, you're not being asked to approve any of this. We're just getting this out in front, so you're aware of the discussion that's been taking place. You're going to read through some of these and say, "I don't, I'm not certain I understand why we would need a policy." And if that comes up, then let's certainly address that at the next work session. We might have some ideas on why it's a good idea to have that, or we might simply agree that, well, it might not apply for the city of Burlington, so let's go ahead and scrap that. These are the city, look back to be the city's policies, not something that Piper Jaffray is trying to implement for the city. We found these to be favorably received by rating agencies, to have a set of policies that are comprehensive. You deal with revenue estimates, how you're defining your operating budget, what constitutes a balanced budget, figuring out a method of implementing, it's going to be a transition time, but building in an operating reserve into your budget, so that if you have things that come up in a year where you have cost overrun, they're absorbed by your operating reserve, not by depleting your fund balance. Best practice, I mean, I, my personal finance budget, if I budgeted every penny that I had in my monthly budget, I'm pretty sure that I would end up with negative pennies at the end of the month. So I guess I know how that works. And then also, there's some blanks on here, what are going to be some targeting ending cash balances for the city? Again, a lot of these are going to be addressed by transition plans. Some of them still have deficit balances, or balances below where probably you would set your recommended levels. The idea being that you get there somewhere five, ten years, and maybe you set some benchmarks to be able to show progress to the rating agencies when we're discussing them. Otherwise, we'll be kind of outline a little bit more about the capital improvement budget and planning process. The main thing, I think, that would be, the council will be glad to hear that, before you hold the public hearing, you will know what the payment sources will be on projects. So you're not holding a hearing such as last December, and then turning around and having to discover what the cost is on the project. So we're trying to spearhead that, and make sure, and as funny as that sounds, that was actually a policy, that was in your policies, that that would be out there, and it would be presented to the council before the public hearing is held. Again, we're not going to go back and look at bygones, but we're going to set this up, make sure the council understands this, that, hey, if you got a project that's coming up, we want to understand before we're holding a public hearing what's going to cost and how it's going to be paid for. And if it's not part of your five-year capital improvement plan, then obviously you can make a modification, but know how that affects, the longer you're pointing. Other than that, there's some policies about debt limit, tax increment financing. A lot of these are pretty generic, and they can be modified. And that's an important thing to notice with all, all of these policies. Nothing in any of these policies that you would set up would exclude you from doing something that is legal by Iowa code. The Iowa code says you can do what the city council can do. However, you might be violating one of your policies, in which case, you would either want to make a justification for why you're violating the financial policy, or give a reason for modifying the policy. You can change the policies. They're not set in stone, written in stone, I guess you would say, and then that's what you follow. They can be modified over time as the city's needs change. Obviously, if there are changes in different state laws, these will want to be reviewed and updated as well. Kind of next step on these is read through them, as painful as it might be. Attempt to, to understand what it is that's written. Some of them, you're going to say, "I honestly don't care." And if that's the case, that's fine. There are going to be some policies that really seem trivial. But if you want explanation on any of the policies, then we'll be more than happy to discuss that with you members of council. The hope is that we address this maybe in more detail at your next work session, if there's specific ones that you want to talk about modification and implementation. Any questions on these policies? There may be some that get added over the next few weeks. For example, we flagged a few that you simply haven't had time to communicate back and forth, that I had questions on, and that Stephanie and Jim both had some as well. So, but here's a draft of some financial policies, but I think will be a good working document moving forward.
Okay.
Any questions from the council? Jim, Stephanie, you have anything to add in the process?
You notice, I guess, and you've already mentioned it, Travis, but like page seven, the targeted ending cash balance, we're going to have to have some discussions about where that needs to be. But some of the, one of, I think, are you going to be showing some figures here? I think you had Travis of trying to get the, like, the general fund to a ten percent cash balance in ten years as, as an example of a figure to go in here. In the general fund, that targeted ending cash balance would be a percentage of expenditures?
Yeah, percentage of expenditures. Whether it is expenditures or given you.
So you're not looking at a dollar amount?
No.
You're looking at a percentage?
No, and you're going to want to have most of them be comparable to that.
Right.
Actually, you're pretty much going to want to see most, all of those be at that kind of, that deal, so that it's flexible and can move from year to year without having that fixed number in there. You're going to see our, our expenditure amounts in the different funds will change. Will typically are going to grow as time goes on, and you don't want the policy to have to- are going to grow as time goes on, and you don't want the policy to have to be updated just to take that into account.
Right.
Having a percentage figure in there allows that to be flexible with the size of the budget.
Correct.
Correct.
On page nine, a couple of things that are in there at the very top, it talks about the capital improvement plan, I think? Yeah, section 19 goes over, and that shows that being adopted by the planning commission.
We haven't defined that word yet.
We haven't defined whether that's, I've had that in other towns where the planning commission was, had to formally approve the capital improvement plan. There's no legal requirement for that. But that might be a place where that does go, and I think that still needs to be discussed. Is that the best, is that where we want to see that go along the route? Do you want them to formally approve that to make sure it's in line with our comprehensive You see that it talks about the capital improvement plan being developed every five years and updated annually. And you kind of have a five-year plan that's put into the budget, but it doesn't have an identified funding source for each project to cover the full cost components outlined for each of the five years. And that needs to be, part of a true capital improvement plan should be able to identify how you're going to fund it over the five-year period. The debt structure at the bottom of that page, it has the average maturity, at or below 10 years, is that, basically, you said an 18-year bond?
Yeah, that would be an 18-year bond issue.
So if you're going to go beyond 18 years on a bond issue, you'd have to have some discussion about, does this make sense to violate? It doesn't mean that you cannot. It means that you need to have a, make a conscious decision that you're going to be, for example, on a 20-year repayment schedule on a given issue.
Right, it would also keep you, or limits the city's ability to backload debt. For example, if you did a 15-year debt, but all of your debt was maturing in years 13, 14, and 15, that would violate this policy, even though it's not, like we said, the 18-year level debt would be the average life of 10 years. So, you know, there's obviously some room for adjustment. You might choose lower. You might choose a maximum average life, seven years on certain projects. We've seen that where it's defined by street sewer projects are shorter, and then you find other projects that could be financed over a long period.
The policy on page 10, the debt limit, we've thrown a figure in here, that of the debt margin for GO bonds, 30% will be reserved for emergency purposes. Right now, we're at 20. So that would, if you think that 30 is the right figure, I mean, we threw 30 out as being something that you can provide more flexibility than what we currently have, it makes sense to have it in here. If you think it should be 40, it can be 40. If you think where we're at right now, at only 20% is acceptable, it can be adjusted to 20. Our thought process was, is that 30 would made sense in our circumstances to get some more flexibility than what we currently have. And then it would require, this is one that would require one of those transition plans. How do we get from where we're at now, 20% to 30%? And most likely seeing that occur over a 10-year timeframe?
My guess is it would, the good news is, for the city, would be that most of your debt does mature within 10 years. So you do have the ability to modify these policies relatively quickly. If you're retiring $3 million of debt, or $3.5 million of debt per year, and you only issued $3 million, then you're adding $500,000 or half a million to your bonding capacity. Over 10 years, you've looked that down to 20%, or, sorry, down to 30%, or up to 30%.
And I think that was the extent of what I had for comments on here. Most of, a lot of them do, you can set targets, but we're also going to have to do some transition amounts to get from where we are now to where we want to be over a period of time.
Yeah. Can I do apologize that you guys did not get this ahead of time? This was a last-minute effort getting all of these finalized. So the intent was to introduce it and allow you guys to review it for your next work session.
Yeah, so this will be here, come back for, at the next work session to be able to, if you have any questions come up in the meantime, to be able to ask, with the intent that we would look to, if we can answer and address most of those issues at the next work session, to formally look at adopting at the following council meeting. If not, then a subsequent one after that.
You know, one question I have, just on the format of the budget itself, after this revamp, which I know you guys are putting a lot of work into this, will it be a little easier for people to understand? Because there were so many transfer here, to transfer there, you know, that I think it was hard for a lot of people to read. And will it be a little easier for people to understand after you're done?
Yeah, and I don't know if I included that as a policy, but definitely an objective would be that the budget would be in a useful form that can be communicated to the patrons of the city.
Yeah, I think the way it was, it's so overwhelming that they gave up on it, you know?
That's been one of the things, we've looked at a lot of different communities' budgets. We've looked at parts of different ones that we like. Some of them are things that we, that are detailed enough that we can't transition that far in one year. But we've looked at, what can we transition this next budget cycle? And I think Stephanie's been collecting those as we moved along to change the format that we do it in. The transfers in and out is a very difficult one to get to where it doesn't become problematic because of what we're required by the state to do, but it still can be clearer than what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good question. Okay. Not going to have a lot on this, but when I say debt book debt profile, the plan here is streamlining, or the goal is streamlining the capital improvement policy, the planning process, excuse me. And this is going to be worked mainly with Stephanie and myself back and forth, that we're working from the same debt book, all the same payments. We're sharing an Excel file literally back and forth between us, updated after every bond issue. And as we're going through the planning process, the capital improvement planning process, that's readily available for the city. So it becomes something the city can look at, modify, and move forward with. So that's still in progress. The budget documents planning tool, we talked about this a little bit as far as implementation of the long-range plan. The goal is that the plan would have your current year's historical results, and then you would also have your budget that you were in the middle of. So if you're thinking planning in February, we're going to have actual results from '12, probably a modified or updated budget for fiscal year '13, and then you would have your, what would be your adopted budget for fiscal '14, and then you would be looking at five years out. So you would, literally, pretty much, when you're planning, you're really looking at seven fiscal years. That's a lot, but it also gives you a nice picture of how your decisions that you're making will affect your long-term fund balance, complying with your financial policies, public checks and balances built into the system hopefully. So this is probably, I'm here on this page, so loss real allocation for fiscal '13 for fund balance relief. And I would say everything after here is really raw, and just born out of discussions, things that have been talked about in meetings. And the main purpose is addressing what is remaining as far as deficit balances on the city's books. So you can see, second column over, anticipated deficit as of June 30th, and the anticipators just after some of your outstanding encumbrances are taken into account. So about 4.4 million total between the whole funds. You can see how that's broken out between the funds, and you see the bulk of it coming down in the rec plus, on those golf course, road use tax fund. A lot of these are going to take some time to, I would say, unwind. One thing the city does currently have built into their budget is fiscal '13 and '14 revenue for streets program, about $650,000. The thought has been tossed around, is there a possibility of re-allocating some of those funds to clean up some of these fund balances? We're not talking about not doing the streets programs, per se, but the discussion from Jim was, you know, is there a way to delay it to the next fiscal year to kind of reallocate some of the funds?
Yeah, the fiscal 2013 amount is fairly easy to do in terms of the project that occurs this next summer doesn't begin until June, with the majority of payments beginning July 1 or after. Having an allocation of $648,000 in this year's budget for a project that's primarily in fiscal 2014 is really a paper, paper change saying we're not going to put that allocation in 2013 to that. We can still have the project occur next summer and that be the 2014 project within the 2014 budget. But that also puts into account there, what do we do, as Travis has put together that column on that fiscal 2014, how do we pay, do we do that project? Is that one that we just don't do a project this next summer? Is it one where, when we do the project, we just use bond funds to pay for? Those are some discussions that we need to have as we move closer to doing the 2014 But we've already, out of the 2013 budget, we've already, the one thing that we've already committed to on things is that RISE grant, the 207,000 that's listed there, that's to do the road from downtown around the curve up to Case.
Bluff Road.
Bluff Road. That we just received the 800-some thousand from the state on. Or is it closer to a million, I guess, isn't it? But we've already committed to doing that piece. The others are ones that we still have to talk about how we're doing.
So you can see that a lot of the funds on the road use tax part, you know, are not addressed, unless they're addressed a few pages later. This is, again, preliminary discussion, we'll look for your feedback, thoughts, as we move forward on figuring out what is the best method of giving the deficit balances off the, for the city as soon as possible.
Lot of numbers to look at here.
There are a lot of numbers, yes. I mean, just take it from your treasury reports, and none of these, none of these numbers are new, they're just thrown together all in one sheet.
Every time I look at this, I'm astounded at how much in the whole we are on some of these funds. Startles me.
And this, that we were talking about tonight, this TIF refunding for out there, that wouldn't really come into play till 2014, would it?
No, and it's going to be, it would be basically being paid out of new property tax dollars that come in.
But it couldn't be until at least 2014?
Correct.
Because the property tax take, yeah.
2015.
15.
2015 it would be at?
Right, because it would be your 11 of '13 would be the first valuation year on that property.
And then it runs, yeah, and then it runs behind.
So you're sliding through those years.
So really, that's out there a little ways, which is good.
Well, and this won't count against our debt. It won't, and that's, as long as we structure that correctly. He made the comment, Travis did, about the annual appropriations language that would get included in that. There's, subject to annual appropriation, I think is the terminology that's used. And that basically says, if and when the funds are available, you do the rebate, which means if the funds are not available, the rebate doesn't exist. That keeps it from going against your long-term debt.
But it gives us a little longer to get a little more solid on our, too, before that comes into play, and though it shouldn't, like, yeah, it should, shouldn't matter, I guess, it's just all, yeah.
But when Travis has the column for FY 2013 there, just to clarify, the figures that we use there, we tried to figure out, how can we clean up a lot of these, this relatively smaller accounts that have been sitting out there and get rid of those deficits right away with this first allocation and leave some of the bigger ones that are ongoing issues that we still have to get an answer plan that, I guess I'll turn it back to you and let you get on to talking about how you're going to do that.
This is specifically talking about local option sales tax?
Yeah.
Yep.
And only the portion previously allocated to the street.
Yeah.
So you can see, even with this year, you're only totaling about $513,000. You would still have another $134,000 that you could potentially allocate, maybe to reducing the deficit on the road use tax fund. But that amount would almost take out your vehicle maintenance on deficit balance. So, you know, you can see there's options as far as if you wanted to use that for any allocation, or kind of plow that forward and use it to kind of maybe jumpstart a portion of the street's.
Well, most debt reduction strategies say this is the way to do it, get rid of the smaller ones and then attack the larger ones, yeah.
Oh, and an example, the recreation fund, that $117,000 that's been sitting there for 10 years, clean up some of these that have been sitting there for a while.
And these are ones that, you know, if you step back to the short-term plan, these are ones that kind of be identified as capital project where you could, quote unquote, bond for them, or take other loan to like them off.
Personally, I'd rather not do that than this, so that'd be good.
The next page then is a little bit about targeting, getting to 10% general fund balance in year 10, assuming 3% budget growth. So I'm really just going to look at the top table and the rest, and on the next page are just four scenarios, but they're really just derivatives of the first scenario. So if you look at your general fund budget, fiscal '12 was about $17 million. If you grow, assume that budget were to grow at 3% per year, you can see your total general fund balance. So if you're targeting a reserve of 10%, you can see that reserve fund requirement grows. So this year, if you had a 10% reserve, it'd be 1.7 million. Next year, or sorry, so at the end of fiscal '13, it would be $1,751, '14 thereafter. You can see how the math works. As your general fund grows, your general fund, or your general fund reserve requirement would also grow. Estimated balance at the end of fiscal year '12, $364,000, or 2.15% of your total general fund expenditures, or your general fund budget. Pairing to the target, if your target is truly 10%, you're about 1.39 short. So what we've looked at is, are there ways that we can identify a plan to get to 10%? Obviously, there's a lot of underlying assumptions in here, but simple math, how much do you need to add to your budget and balance to get to 10% in a year? So what we've looked at is, if in year one in fiscal '13 this year, there can be about $100,000 of potential savings identified, or when I say potential savings, that's in addition to your general fund balance, that would be a start. You'd move from 364 to 464, you're up to 2.65%. And then the math kind of works out, you can see an annual margin increase. So if we've saved $100,000 off of this year's budget, we're assuming that we're not backtracking. So we're still saving that $100,000 that we saved off of fiscal '13 budget, but we're also finding an additional $20,000 to save. And you can see the math the same way. So in the next year, we've kept the same 100, the 100, another 20 that we found in fiscal '14, and then we found another 20,000 to save in fiscal '15. So what you can see, when you get up to fiscal '15, you've added up, you're going to add $140,000 to your general fund balance that year. So you can see now you're up to 3.9% at the end of the year. So you can see how the math works. By the time you get out to year 10, you've in effect reached your goal, 9.99%. My only comment is, 10% may be viewed as slightly too passive from a rating agency's standpoint, as far as doing it over 10 years.
Wait, wait, the thing I'm really looking at, wasn't it?
Wait, wait, the thing I'm really looking at, wasn't it at least 15 something like that?
They would like to see your balance higher. I mean, we have to step back, you got to look where you're at, your other pressures that you're having, you have to unwind the deficit balances on top of this and other funds. So the plan has to be comprehensive because not only are you adding to your balance, you're also taking care of your deficit balances in the other funds as well. I think ideally, if you were to get an ideal policy from a rating agency, they'd probably say, well, 40% fund balance would be perfect.
I've seen a lot of calls go out that, when we were being rated by S&amp;P and we were at 30%, they saw us as very healthy, and they were basically saying anything over 25% was in a good, solid position. At the same time, you have the state trying to put across a bill that would cap us at 25%.
Right.
So you have to weigh the balance that there is a perception that if you have too much funds on hand, you have too much funds on hand. So there has to be a balance between what public perceives and what the rating agencies do and still make sure that you don't get into bad shape with the rating agencies. Closer you come up to that 25% figure, the better you're going to be there, but you've got to know what's realistic for what the public's going to perceive of having too much money.
You know, I would say long-range 25% is not a bad goal, but getting there, I mean, for your city, may be a 15-year process. That's not to say it should, still shouldn't be the goal or a policy, you just might have a more detailed transition plan. Scenario two then kind of ratchets this up. Let's get to 10% in five years. I mean, you're talking about some identifying some real cuts or revenue increases. There's only one way to get an addition to your balance, you know, it's changing the budget inputs. Your two budget inputs are revenues and expenditures. This gets you to 10% in five years and gets you to 25% in 10 years. I think if you're doing 10% in five years, 25% is probably a better 15-year goal. I think you're just cutting, cutting too rapidly at that point to get, to add 15% to your fund balance over five years, given your current service. That's not to say it's not a good goal, but you can see the annual addition to your balance. I mean, you're cutting, you're finding an additional 110,000 of cuts every year. That's a big number because that's comp. You know, the glory days would be, well, you just grow yourself out of this. You get a couple of years of 5% growth and, you know, like I said, there's two inputs. When I say annual plus or addition to balance, if you have a year of valuation growth that outpaces expectations, you can certainly accelerate this process by holding your budget in place and you're not considering cuts. Thing is though, I mean, as the last five years have taught us, banking on valuation growth can be a dangerous proposition.
Particularly.
So we'll be conservative on our valuation growth. You know, as we're building the budget model, we will assume some valuation growth, obviously we can't assume increases in expenditures and not some sort of valuation growth, but we'll want to make certain that our expectations are clear before we're working through.
Is 3% a reasonable number?
If you like 2%, it's on the next page.
I see that. But then also, of course, we can't know what the state legislature might do, that would really throw us into a whole different scenario, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but it would change the analysis. So I provided three and four scenarios with 2% budget growth, you know, it's obviously a little more palatable, but you can see it doesn't move the needle that much as far as how much you're going to need to change or add to your budget or maybe your basis.
Well, part of me says, let's get going, but, you know, I don't think that's realistic.
You know, 5 to 10 are by no means lines of the sand. 7 could be a number, 8 could be a number.
Sure.
6 years could be a number. Everybody kind of clear on what we're trying to illustrate here is it's a simple analysis, but it's basically what are the big project planning to try to accomplish on a line item by line item basis, so. The next page then, we've titled general fund rightsizing scenario. And again, a lot of these are, you know, I'd say it's really premature to say anything would be concrete at all on any of these pages. You know, there are some staffing things that are not being filled or have been addressed already, but a lot of this is just kind of work and where has the city identified some potential cost reductions? Let's first talk through cost increases, what we're calling potential cost increases. In fiscal 13, you see 120,000 there. These are, when I, TIF hit is a bad term, we just haven't updated, but essentially what it means is you're transferring some expenditure that was originally in TIF to your general fund because the determination's made that it probably shouldn't have been.
With basically administrative fee to cover a portion of the city manager's salary, and they're transferring from TIF to general fund 50,000 a year. And we didn't do that in fiscal 12, but we just ended and we're not doing it moving forward, and that was an accountant's recommendation that we not do that.
Can you repeat that? There was money coming from TIF that went for?
It was, the justification was to come out of TIF to pay for a portion of, or to cover a portion of the city manager's salary. So we're moving 50,000 a year from TIF to the general fund, and that's not being done now.
But that was being done.
That was being done.
We stopped that practice.
Yeah, we didn't do it in fiscal 12, and we aren't doing it going forward, but that being said, that means we lost $50,000 that was budgeted in the general fund that is not going to be there.
And the legal fees, insurance, so the same, same type of.
Legal fees is comparable, and we, we're moving anything over the budget amount to sewer and sanitation, and we're not going to do that. I mean, if sewer or sanitation have legal fees, we'll charge them their legal fees, but we're not just going to move the overage over there. And then the insurance is a different concept. We have the, we self-insure, we're comp, and we need to build up a balance in there so that we can, if we have some, the adjustments that go on from year to year and go down, that we just have a cash, cash balance in there to cover. And realistically, we should be able to, after fiscal 2014, that hopefully we'll be in a spot where we don't need to do that after that. It's only 35,000, but we should be able to build up a cash balance after that, possibly another year, but I think 2014 should be enough.
So just based on this, based on the budget that was approved by the council this February, February, March, you have $120,000 increase to your general fund from these three items. That being said, it appears right now that the general fund cost reductions identified are almost 420,000. So you can see savings from different contracts, possibly not filling a couple of positions, other staffing things as well, you would have a rightsizing surplus of 300,000. So in other words, you added, you would add $300,000 to your general fund balance. So that, that outpaces what was shown on the previous page.
Yeah.
Thing is, not all of these are for sure set and done, things approved by council administrations.
One of the, I mean, there's some other things that have happened too. Engineering was a department that a good chunk of expenses have been moved over at the end of the year that didn't have a basis to back it, and we did not do that in fiscal 2012, and moving forward, we won't either. To move an engineering charge from the general fund to another fund is going to require justification for it, that the engineering department actually performed services for that other function where the costs go to. So that's going to be something that even though it was, we're not going to perform as well as what we budgeted to there. I just, I know that.
So that's, that's not taken into account, and on this page, you would then update that, you know, up there at the top, you would add the reallocation of engineering as a cost to the general fund. Fiscal 14, you can see we started addressing a lot of the stuff that was shown on the deficit fund, fund balance is shown on the prior page, so you're looking at deficit reduction plans for golf course, recplex, parking, road use, property and vehicle maintenance. Some of those five years, some of those seven-year plans, kind of give, you know, with those amounts, you have a, you know, it's about 700,000 in the golf course, 660, over seven years of deficit reduction, you would have erased that deficit balance. So the plan is you're going to target, we will target those amounts on kind of a reasonable basis of, hey, we're not going to wipe this all out in one year. So let's do it incrementally by fund. There's nothing that says that you can't take all of it in one year, you know, that all those amounts together is 425,000 and apply it to one fund. I think it probably looks better to kind of systematically reduce each deficit balance down the whole time and make progress in all the funds and move towards that, I guess, financial health. So with that, remember I've, we targeted that general fund balance increase of 120,000 in that scenario one, so that's built in there. Also, debt payment, and I'm calling these old capital projects, but this is the amount that was outstanding that was financed in your short-term plan, that still means long-term debt, that's not TIF supported or supported by tax increment, finances and revenues. Just simply, if you were to pay it off over 10 years with level of principal and interest, it's about three and a half million of principal, at a 3% rate, it'd be 416,000 per year. So if you were to build that in, assuming that all of that is paid for with the general fund, you're going to need to come up with a scenario of about a million 81,000 from current year's budget of cost reductions.
And we did that when, under the guise, we assumed that there was a conscious will from the council not to increase property taxes to cover that debt structure. And that's kind of what I've heard up to now, and we wanted to build it to where this was all through changes in the general fund cost, cost and revenues, and revenues have to be something other than property taxes.
You know, I will say that, you know, with this, you know, if a different debt structure is, and I talked a little bit of this with Jim, there's a potential that you could defer some of that debt or principal payment, you can still pay interest, but let's say you only paid interest for the first few years, so maybe your payment is going to be roughly 100,000 per year. That would allow you to accelerate your general fund balance a little more quickly. There are some options, we just wanted to give you the base 10-year level debt on this amount. So know that this will come up for discussion as we move forward as well.
I just really dislike that concept.
What's that?
I really dislike that concept.
Oh, what's, interestingly. What he's suggesting is that you can get to the same end spot, but it's hard to do because what he's, he's saying is you reduce your, this payment to like 150,000 or whatever and increase your, instead of on 100, the general fund balance increase, instead of being 120, have that be 350 or 400,000. But that's hard to, as a group, commit to, to not spending that much money when you're going through it on an annual basis. It's a matter of how well, how well are you able to live by that? And the reason, there is a reason from your perspective, when you go to Moody's, to do it that way, to consciously get that general fund balance built up faster, because that's something they, they look at, how flexible are you in handling an emergency? And that having so little money in the general fund is a big, major concern to them.
I mean, right now, your flexibility in an emergency would probably be to finance, so.
Okay, I can understand that.
Whether or not you're deferring principal now or financing when an emergency will come up, I think you're ultimately in the same place. Moody's would like to see you probably at 10% or more now.
As soon as you get there, the sooner you get there, the better from Moody's perspective.
I mean, it's not like you have to get that buy-off on your plan, but know that in the second quarter alone of this fiscal year, there were over 290 cities downering across the country.
290?
290. So, you know, not to strike fear in the hearts, but there's a lot of cities in this situation in the face of tough decisions on how do you address it? How do you become a financial consultant and still be responsible to the taxpayers? So, you know, you're not unlike the cities around the country that are dealing with the same option, these same options as well. So, so the cost reductions that are outlined there, you can see the total of those reductions outlined is 940,000. And you're still 140,000 of getting where you need to be, or in other words, you're really still decreasing your balance by 20,000 without any other cost reductions identified.
And even with that, one of those that's in there, that transit evaluation, that's, that's throwing a number out as to what we think might be possible to come up with an alternate way to provide service. It may be that you don't have, we don't, that we can't provide service in a more cost-effective manner than what we currently are. So that, there's nothing definite about that number there. And as you look at the staffing that's listed in there above that, the police department identified their four positions that they looked at not to refill, they had discussions up and down their chain as to how, how they could be a part of this process, and those four positions amounted to just over $300,000 of savings. Now, the discussion wasn't there with the fire department, I just basically said, we're not filling those two positions. Now, that's kind of where we started with the police department. When they had an opening come up right when I started, I said, we're not filling it, and they came up with some alternatives to look at for other positions to eliminate rather than the ones that I said not to fill. But that's where you see on the fire department's side, two that aren't filled that came open in July, and then looking at as the next position comes open through retirement, not to fill it. So anything that's outlined on that is all.
What was that going to take us down to on fire? What were we trying to get down to?
That puts us at 13 per shift, and then you have the chief, assistant chief, fire inspector, and office clerk on top of 13 per shift. So you're sitting at 43. We're at 44 right now because we have one extra on one of the three shifts. But, and then you see down below, there's, as you look at some other potentials, it talks about three more firefighters. Well, you, you go from 13 down to 12, and you, to make a change like that, you have some significant organizational structure issues. It's pretty difficult to man two fire stations and man two ambulances with 12 individuals and, and not run into some crunches when it comes to meeting your minimum staffings to do that. So then you're saying, do, can you really man two ambulances, or can you staff the two fire, fire stations? Do you have to look at combining somewhere? So you, to do that is going to be a very difficult change. It's not going, that you can't make that change without really changing to what you provide service. Even going from the 14 down to 13 puts a lot of stress on it, but it can, can be done.
There's some, I guess, some real dollars that we, you know, started talking about just a couple of months ago, you know, here's some identified situations, and I guess view this as a conversation piece. You know, I wish, I wish there was a way to write draft, draft, draft over everything because really now this is final, it should be viewed as final. These are just, I guess, options that come out of meetings that we have. So want to get something in front of the council, you want the council to be aware of the dialogue provided, but obviously you'll face questions as you're moving forward with this and give you the tools that you need to communicate with your patrons as well.
Can you give me, Stephanie or Jim, how much of a, how many pennies in tax increase would it take us to get 141,000?
How much would we have to increase taxes to do 141,000?
Travis can get you better than I can, he has the formula there.
You would just ring him and let him hear.
140,000?
I think-
Obviously, this is about right around. 20 cents?
20 cents, it'd be 20 cents, it'd be about 20 cents. 22, I think, maybe. It seemed like a million dollars would take a dollar 50 levy.
Yeah, 715 million tax evaluation would be 140,000.
That may have to be part of our discussion.
Yeah. Definitely.
We also, we understand where you're at, as your beginning point for not wanting to raise taxes, but you also have to look at where are services? But that's, that's, those are hard calls.
Yeah, that's the balance.
Okay, thanks.
The last, you know, one of the last things, and we'll do this quickly. Like I said, we're going to work this through, get a form for council approval consideration this fall, it might be in the spring, with the budgeting season. Capital improvement planning, we're trying to hit on that a little bit. City has a five-year plan, our goal is to work with the city, make sure we identify all the funding sources, payments for every project the city has on its five-year CAC capital improvement plan. Addressing the big picture, kind of the next steps, reviewing the financial policies, work towards fine tuning that rightsizing document, or the rightsizing the general fund ballot budget tool, and then we're going to just work on developing and implementing the capital comprehensive budget planning and the capital improvement planning tool. So, otherwise, that's all I have for this. Is there any general questions, concerns, communications questions, anything you can see in addition to what we designed? I will build into that rightsizing a levy calculator, if there is a rightsizing surplus of deficit that shows what that increase would look like.
Okay. All right, thank you Travis, this will give us something to, to work for, two weeks from today, or, yeah, two weeks from today. All right, thank you Travis. Are we moving on to Eric? This is a presentation of a comprehensive plan update.
Well, the people, the people at home won't be able to hear you if you do that. Unless you're going to take the mic over there with you.
I was going to yell, but that's okay. Good evening, Chris Chancellor with MSA Professional Services. Real quick, going to do just a, an update for you guys on where we're at with the comprehensive plan process, what's, what's been done most recently, specifically honing in on the public, public side of it, public input, public feedback on a plan, and then also what's coming up in that sense. Go ahead. Just again, why did the city choose to update the comprehensive plan? To redefine policies and priorities for coordinated growth, for community revitalization, and provision of public services and infrastructure. The plan includes goals, objectives, strategies, guidelines, maps, and graphics to serve as a guide for land use and fiscal decision-making, which you guys are obviously getting into that too. So some of these things that we've gone over on the implementation side, that I'll go over a little later, are going to help you out as you go through that process, and then down the line at the next 20 years. Go ahead. Plan document, same as before, basically you're looking at introduction, planning process, and public participation section, issues and opportunities, vision, goals, objectives, strategies, land use is its own separate chapter, implementation and action plan is its own separate chapter, and then we have community indicators, which is kind of the background of the plan, and public input as a separate appendix that has all that public input that we've gathered in one place that people can go through. And then finally, maps, so they're easily, people can pull out all the maps that are kind of sprinkled throughout some of those other things, and find those easily. Draft vision statement, we went over this the last time, we haven't had a lot of changes to it in the subcommittee meetings and that kind of thing, in the steering committee meetings or the subcommittee meetings, but it is still out there, and if, again, if there are any comments on that, by all means, let us know, and they'll be available, they've been available to the public and have been out there as well, so. Project schedule, these, everything's been done on this, but basically, the items that are bolded, you guys reviewed it when we went over this in May, or, yeah, May, at the, at the last update I did for the council and the planning commission. Basically, we started with community survey, had a public input meeting, did focus group discussions, and, go ahead. And then on May 29th and 30th, which was right after the last update that I gave, we had growth and development workshops. So I'm going to go over some of the things that came out of those that went into chapter five, which is the land use chapter. And then the next upcoming item, which I'll go over here in a little bit too, is a public presentation in an open house, and that's on September 4th at the library. We've reserved a room there to basically present the plan in its entirety at this point, in a kind of a formatted presentation, and then allow people to just basically give comments. We'll have maps up for them to look at if they have questions on the maps, comments on the maps, just basically kind of that last opportunity informally, not in a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission, or before you guys, to have people give us their, their comments and that kind of thing. The next big thing would be for the steering committee, and their last meeting is on September 20th, which will be a working meeting, and that'll take input from their, a couple of subcommittee meetings that they've had on the, on the final kind of draft that they've got at this point, as well as public comments. And we're going to have an extended meeting that day, three-hour meeting or so, and get all the rest of the edits made, so that then the planning commission can make a recommendation on that, on the comprehensive plan to you guys. Public interaction elements, we went over most of those, the ones that are done are checked. The one that's coming up is that one on the 4th, which is a big one, and pretty important. They've, they've been well attended up to this point, so we're hoping to go ahead and, you know, have the paper mention that. We've got some posters that are coming, and that kind of thing, to get, get people at that meeting, get a full review of the plan. Again, all of these documents, and I just checked today, have been updated, all the chapters, by chapter, and then the appendices are on the comp plan, which is burlingtcopplan.com. So they're in PDF format, fairly easy to download if anybody wanted to go through some of those things in more detail that either I covered, covered it the last time, or I will, I will cover here in a second. On the land use and development workshops, which we had back in May, with, the first day was just an afternoon meeting, and it focused on regional collaboration, so we invited county members, people from the, you know, the planning, the regional planning commission, that kind of thing, city members, everybody, both utility people, all that to come in and just talk about regional issues that may not get talked about in a forum all the time. It was a really good discussion, a lot of good things came out of it that went into chapter five, that were mentioned there. And then on the 30th, we had kind of the bigger, we had, the first meeting in the morning was downtown and waterfront, which basically was those, those stakeholders and people that were interested in that coming in, doing basically, we had maps spread out and that kind of thing, we did sort of shret workshops on things that could be improved, items they'd like to see, what they, if there were an improvement plan, you know, what we could do, what the city could do, where things were already happening, we went ahead and marked those, so that kind of have you have a pace on, here's the things that are going on that could be continued. Same thing with Highway 61 and Roosevelt corridor, and then just general residential neighborhood growth, new growth, that kind of thing, what people would want to see in new neighborhoods, what they liked about older traditionally neighborhoods that they wanted to bring forward. And then basically, how development could continue and get better, and what could be improved on Roosevelt. And then at that evening, we had a public open house, which we presented the maps and the documents that we'd have from the previous, from the previous three sessions there, and did a little bit of a presentation, and then basically just kind of stood back and let people draw on the maps, did a lot of drawing for them when they had ideas, let the groups talk, you know. It was a, it was a really, it was well attended, it was really interesting how some of the people split off, and, and, you know, were very involved in the pieces of the, the pieces of the city that we were looking at, that they were interested in, and the comments we got. I'm just going to go over a couple of the maps. Again, these are in chapter five, and they have, you know, all kinds of description for all these numbers, and they're going to be really hard to see anyway, but we had a regional context map, this came out of the first meeting, and it basically just looked at the whole region, and I would say that there's yellow and black, the yellow dots are basically things that, I don't know if I can find it here, those are improvement opportunities, those are things that people would want to see, and the black ones were things that existed, either, you know, important sites or important projects that were already going on. And that's kind of a reoccurring theme throughout these maps on, here's what the current status is, here's what people like about these areas, here's what we think we might want to see in the future. Planning areas, we went over neighborhoods, basically for the city, kind of divided it out with the help of the committee and staff, and this was, this map is probably a map in flux in general, it'll probably, you know, neighborhoods kind of change every once in a while, and their boundaries are never quite, quite set, but generally, we came up with some planning areas to look at as the city continues to make smaller scale planning efforts down the line, areas they could focus in on that would be important and have some identity, the character that would hold them together. Downtown, this is the map that came out of there, again, yellow is improvement opportunities, and again, there's text in chapter five that goes over all of these, has outlines for what the different improvements might be, what we would like to see. There's even some, some graphics showing, some, you know, where we've talked about, here's an area that screening would be a good idea, to look at, you know, to protect view sheds and that kind of thing, what that looks like, if it, in just a single graphic, that kind of thing. And then Roosevelt, the next three maps, this is the south segment, same sort of thing, and you can go into the next one. This is the, the central segment, we kind of split it up so you can see it, otherwise it was a pretty, pretty long map, took up a pretty good sized table. And then the north segment, and again, basically looking at different improvements that could be, different improvements along the corridor, different focal points that are already there along the corridor, and then just opportunities for reinvestment are the, are the green dots there, and those are areas where we saw basically either a underused parcel, or one that we knew was in transition, or could be an opportunity in the future if situation changed along that corridor. Chapter six is that implementation section, chapter and the action plan. The key implementation elements are an annual report, which we review on an annual basis, progress, actions to pursue, consistent actions that have been taken in the past year, and then staff recommendations on how to implement the plan, what's been implemented, how it can be changed, that kind of thing. And it links to the annual goals and budget. The most important opportunity for this plan is to influence the growth and development of the city, is through the annual goal-setting, budgeting, capital planning processes. These existing annual efforts determine what projects will and will not be pursued by the city, so it is very important to integrate this plan with those processes every year. And the next slide kind of shows, just a general, in July, staff would complete a comprehensive plan annual report, basically kind of that first draft of, this is what we did in the last year, this is what we were looking for the next year to do as far as implementing the plan. That then goes to the commission, and they make their recommendation and to council regarding action items to pursue, and/or amendments that may need to be happened. As, as we said, this is kind of a, it's a living document, it's going to be amended over time.
I really like that idea, but are you currently doing, we don't currently do that, do we?
I, I think it's an informal process right now, it happens when it, when it, you know, like when there's something that comes up, but to, we, one of the big things that the steering committee said they wanted was to have this as part of what happens with the plan every year, so that it continues to be looked at and updated.
Doesn't sit there on the shelf.
Yeah, exactly. September, the department directors would get the annual report, that has, at this point, has staff comments, planning staff, and, and planning commission put, you know, their two cents in, or, or changes they may want to make, amendments that they may see needed, that happens too. And then finally, in council holds a public hearing, considers adoption of any of those elements that, that need to be changed, the plan for, you know, that kind of annual report, what's going to happen in the next year, and then any amendments that need to be made. October, you have your kind of goal-setting, so it happens, it's all scheduled to happen before that, so you can take this, that annual report, build it in what you guys are already doing. And then your budgeting is November to February, and then in March, your budget's adopted. So if there are items, and not every item in this plan necessarily has a cost figure to it, some of them are guideline changes, policy changes, that kind of thing, but the ones that do, you can put them into, into that when you feel that it's necessary to move forward on some of those. Again, this is, this is hard to see, but it is in chapter six. We went through every one of the, the goal, the goal sections, housing, economic development, land use, all of those things, and put in basically the goals and the action items that we had. The middle column there with the X's is the target completion year, and it's basically, you know, the next three years, the next five years, and kind of that 10-year period or 20-year period, when it needs to be done. The ones that have X's, X's all the way across are obviously something that's ongoing, it's kind of a, we need to review this as we look at it every year sort of thing. Responsible parties, and again, the ones that are in there in draft form, I'm sure the subcommittee's probably had some input on, on who would be responsible, who would be best responsible, who's going to, basically, you want to find the party that isn't overloaded and can make something work, because that's kind of one of the keys in getting it, is get a lot of people involved, and make sure they have the time and the effort and the, you know, the passion to make some of these happen. And then finally, on the ones that, where it's applicable, potential funding sources. Amending the plan, just a real quick overview, and this is in that chapter as well, changes can be proposed by council staff, individuals, planning commission, and then placed on the planning commission, plan commission agenda. Plan commission makes formal recommendation to council regarding the proposed amendment after they basically hear it. City council holds a hearing, considers the edit, and considers adoption of it, and then finally, the amendment is entered into the comprehensive plan document adopted by council. We went over those before. Down the road again, just to say, we have that public meeting on September 4th at the library, and we'll go over, it'll be presentation of the entire planning document, and then we'll take input. The next thing would be the steering, the next steering committee, and their last meeting is on the 20th. And again, that'll be a, a three-hour kind of, we're guessing it'll be about that long to get those final edits in, and probably have some good, good discussions on some of the things that have, that have, that have been important to everyone in the commission, and how those are going to work. And then P&amp;Z presentation and recommendation is scheduled for October at this point, and with council adoption and a public hearing in November. So that is all I have for a presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
And you too, Eric, appreciate all your work. Okay, what we have left is, any council committee reports? I see a lot of no's, how about, you have anything else we need to talk about? Okay, I don't either, I think we're done.
I always want to turn the meeting.
Here you.
Okay. We're good. Eric, you go turn us off.
We've covered a lot today.
Hope you understand all this.
He has issues.
We have to wait, we're still on the air.
Then we got to fill out this thing about our accomplishments, I don't think we've asked for it.
Yeah, who hasn't, who hasn't turned in this stuff yet?
I turned mine in.
Okay, they asked for it. We got a call from Iowa City today saying, are you getting this to us today?
It's early though. Last year, when we did it, we've always turned them in in September, that's probably why I would-
The memo that went out asked for it on the 21st, but-
Sorry, bud.
But I figured there was some flexibility with that, because you do have plenty of time, yeah.
I handed mine in.